I call it the Tuesday, February 12th, 2019. This is a board session meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Sumis.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. The first item on our agenda is the City Treasurers Report. And my pleasure, the other is the Honorable Paige Cherry, City Treasurer. Welcome, sir.
So difficulty in no power. All right. Everybody has a slide now?
Yes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Dr. Patton, Mr. Aspie, staff, and the clerk. I'm here today to give you an update. Came to you on June of 2018 and talked to you about some things we wanted to do in the Treasurer's office. Now, I'm just here to follow up and tell you how far you have gone. Before I do that, I want to discuss people up with me. Chief Deputy George Garner.
Hey, George.
And Deputy Treasurer Bruce Alonde.
Hey, Bruce.
If you have any questions about this presentation, they'll hear the answer. We've got to the second page there. This year has been a year of evaluation, realignment, and some action by the Treasurer's office. I told you a lot of things I wanted to do when I came here in June, and we talked about security upgrades when we've done that. You can no longer just wander into the Treasurer's office with all those lovely ladies in there working and counting your money. You have to be buzzed in there. Technology upgrades. I talked to you about the remittance machine that we brought, that we were going to buy at that time. We now have it, and I'll tell you some more about the wonderful things that's done for us in a little while. Investment policy, we rewrote that, and it is going great. You'll hear more about that in further in the briefing. We fully embrace Dr. Patton's intern program. We have had 13 fantastic high school seniors come work in the Treasurer's office. 12 of them are college bound. And I want to give a shout out to Ms. Efad at Nenokum and to Mr. Tree Scott at Wilson. They're doing the screening process and sending us some great kids. You'll come there anytime of the day. A lot of these kids are working, going to TCC during the day, so you might see them there in the morning, don't have classes till afternoon. Some of them have finished high school, may be graduating in June with degrees from their high school and from TCC. Portsmouth is not doing enough to sing the praises of the outstanding students that we have in our system. We've got to do more to help tell that story. And we're going to do our part in the Treasurer's office. Mayor, when I was here the last time, you made the point twice, just about the lockbox process and your problem with your bill going to... So Lonnie just handed you something?
Hot dog.
Told you I was going to fix that? Your bill will not come to Portsmouth.
Okay.
Now, that's good, and that's bad. Now, you can't throw the check now, because we process them right here.
Well, that's the thing. In two or three days, they process it right now.
Disatization on the payment processes with the remittance machine we bought. If you put a payment in our drop box tonight at midnight, we'll get it out tomorrow morning at 8:30. By 2 o'clock, it will be scanning in the bank and be processed. So don't throw the check to us. We revised the billing statements. I basically took everything that I had a problem with with the statements, and we tried to make them a little better, easier to read. Put a car on your personal property tax and a little house on your real estate bill, just in case you get confused. Banking services, we are in the final stages of completing our banking transition. Dr. Patton, I probably want to talk to you offline later on, just help me in the final stages of getting there. We're almost there, but I'm in the little systems getting there, so I'll talk to you about that later. But it is going great, and I'll talk to you more about that later. Community projects, we're getting very involved in the community. We're going to civil meetings, letting them know what the Treasurer's office is, what we do for a living, letting them know about unclaimed property that they have out there. We're participating in all the community events. A couple weeks ago, we had a table with Mr. Alonde out at Echoes of Joy, and we actually found some unclaimed property for some people. Matter of fact, we've got something for you, Mr. Battle.
Thank you.
See, Mr. Alonde, he can get it. Your name came up on the list. We just saw it a couple days ago.
Thank you.
So I know you don't need it, but we're going to give it to you anyway.
And pay the tax on it.
And the City Attorney's Office is now helping us, you know, with delinquent property collections. So kudos to them. They've done a marvelous job. What they're doing, though, saves the city and the taxpayer. We have outside attorneys, and we're now employing outside attorneys who actually have practices in Portsmouth as well. But when they do it, the citizens don't get taxed with extra 20% charge that outside attorneys charge. So it's truly a service, not just to the city, but to the citizens as well. So I wanted to try Mr. Aspie and Mr. Challenger, who's been working very hard on that. We really appreciate it. Go to Slide 3. For the two new council persons, when I came in June, I briefed this Slide 3 to the council, and I projected what our earnings were going to be for the next year. $2,750,000. Where if you go to Slide 4, we've actually, with the monies we've invested this past year, we're going to reap $2,771,095.
That's another slide.
This is above and beyond all the things we do. We go to Slide 5 with collections. Just give you a snapshot. When I took office, the year before I took office in June, in December of 2017, the Treasurer's office processed 88 hundred checks. I took office in January of the following year, and it paid $9,500 for the services. Well, this past December, we processed 800 more checks, but only cost us $96. We didn't even pay that to the bank for you. That's what the new processing machine, the new remittance machine has done for us. If you multiply that by the average 12 months, you see how much money you're saving. It's $114,000 right there that we won't spend from your office this year. On January 3rd, when I took office, I was handed a bill for $39,516.27 for banking services. And a vein came out in my neck, because there's no way we shouldn't be paying that kind of money when we have millions of dollars in somebody's bank. And so that's when we started the process of looking for other banking services. And that was just for the quarter ending in December 31st of 2017.
$40,000 for quarter?
For that quarter. That's what the charges were. Banking services. So we trimmed those down, and we're now into the process, our new banking relationship. And I proudly report that at the end of the quarter, December 31st of this year, of last year, 2018, we made $82,000 in interest.
That's way too much.
So, you know, that instead was $121,000 turnaround in one year. You add that to the 114, and then it literally came corner. So once, and we're not fully vested into the new relationship yet. Once we get all the way into that process and get everything crossed over to the new bank, that number will be even higher. I underestimated when I came in to you, with you last year, when I came in in June, I told you we're probably going to make about $28,000, $29,000 in that relationship. Based on that, that's $328,000. And we're not there yet. So once we cross the finish line, that number will probably, should be somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000 that we're going to make just from the money we have. Because your money's sitting in the bank, we may as well make some money on it. And that's what we're doing for you. Next slide. So we are still collecting money. You got any questions?
We're good.
The next slide. So we are still collecting your regular taxes. And right now, your date tax rate, tax collection rate is, for the real estate, is 98%, and the personal property is 91%. And that's 95% and 90% required by the state. So I didn't do the calculations with IT. IT runs those calculations for us. You somewhere else. So they're correct, because they did. This is just a brag slide right here. Let's just say the Treasurer's office is paying for itself. In your current budget, you have, the budget for the Treasurer's office is $2.2 million, which comes from sources of state and city. But just in our investments alone, we brought you in $2.7 million. Now, that's a 22% return on investment. And if you add in the other monies we're talking, that we're making on the monies that we have in the bank, you can add another 500-plus thousand miles of that, you're talking about 60% return on what the Treasurer's office costs this city and the state to produce, we're bringing 60% back to you every year. There's nowhere you're going to get a return on anything like that anywhere else. So that's my brag slide for today.
Yeah, you got it.
And no, we'll continue to work on, next slide, we'll continue to work on our maximization of disatization, because that's where the future's going. We got a lot of things thrown in boxes and places around this city that we just need to get rid of. And so we're disatizing everything we can. It's being stored out there. The IT has bought some more, or the cloud space, whatever it is. I don't know how to take that time, but they're getting there. We're storing those things, so we don't need them, you just delete them, delete them, we'll wipe it. But there's hundreds of boxes of things stored in here that it would take somebody hours to go through and figure it out. But if you got it stored out there digitally, you just do a search for it, and you got it if you need it. So that's what we're moving to. And the next thing we're concentrating on is trying to make it for electronics. So at some point in time, you can go out on the web, on our web, and see all of your bills, pay them there, and if you want to, right from your phone. And we aren't there yet, but that's what we're leaning to to go in the future. You can do it other places in this part of the country, and we want to get Portsmouth there, too. So with that, if you have any questions, Mr. Alonde and Ms. Garner are right there in the background.
Questions?
One small one. I guess the collection rates on Slide 6, the figures 98% and 91%. The numbers that are not there are because people don't pay, or they're lewd in taxes, or...
No, no. One is done on a calendar basis, calendar year, and the other one's done on the fiscal year. So you won't get the one until the end of December, and the other until 31st of June, if it was complete. So that's why they...
And you use DMV stops for the personal property?
Yes, sir.
That's a big lot of better.
But we won't get 100%. I mean, you're always going to have, if we get 100%, you're going to put some other people out there. So that would be great, but there are people and there are circumstances, but we are definitely going after all the money, trying, and we're working with people. We're trying to encourage people, particularly seniors, to come in and get on payment plans and pay early. So the law just says what date it has to be paid by. Doesn't say how it has to be paid. So if they want to come in and pay monthly, whatever works for them. If your quarterly bill is $300, and you want to pay $100 a month, so when the third payment, your bill's paid, you can do that, or whatever amount that works for them. So we're encouraging people who have some issues or seniors to come in and do that. We're working, doing payment plans. And the City Attorney's Office is also doing payment plans for us as well, to make that happen. But yeah, that's why that is.
Phil Scott, question? Great information, Paige. Terrific job you're doing. Food taxes, will you be able to pay those electronically?
We, well...
Are you working towards that?
That's one that's a kind of a self-reporting thing. So I can't say that that'll be, but I'm working right now, personal property, real estate, and those things. The food tax is one we'll have to come later. That'll be a little more difficult to do, because, you know, the restaurants report, we have no way of knowing, they report. And then if they don't report, they'll charge a statutory amount. So that'll be a little more difficult. I'm not sure how that one will work out. But we'll take, when you have a better answer for that.
In fact, they have to enter their gross sales, so they have to certify that signing all. So that might be...
Yeah, so I don't know how, I don't know.
I know some cities have that currently. Virginia Beach is one.
Yeah, we'll have to look into that. But that wasn't the one on the top of my, because that's more on the other side of the hallway than it is on my side.
I'd like to say that, since I've been here, that's a pleasant breath of air, what you just, you know. And in the history of this city, I don't think there's been quite a radical positive change for the city in such a short period of time. It's never happened. Kudos. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I think having sat around the table where you all sit now, I have a full understanding of the process and what it takes to do what you do, and particularly the financial side of it. And so I'm here every day trying to figure out how to make this office a revenue generator so you can do what you do, because I understand what citizens get for what they pay in this city. So thank you, sir. And I'm going to be out there every day trying to help you out with what you need to do.
Other questions? Well, Paige, speaking for everybody on council, thank you for the outstanding job that you're doing. And how can we help you?
Any ideas? Mayor, I got to tell you, the staff and Dr. Patton have been really great to me. I haven't asked for a lot, but the few things that I have asked for have been afforded. So I don't have any big requests or big demands, but I may at some point in time. But right now, we are concentrating on trying to pay our own way, because I know that everyone comes to this body with a request and not necessarily a way to fund it. So we're trying to make, so anything we come to you with in the future, we'll probably try to fund it ourselves, or just ask for funds that are already being generated by my office to take care of. But I don't have a direct need now. If you come to my office now, you know, you'll see, things are different. The floors are different. You know, we are still up there in security. We're going to have security for our money counting, which we don't have right now, but we're going to have that in another month. And so everybody's been very, Dr. Patton has made sure that when needs be, we have what we need. So I don't have a real ask now. So that was an unexpected question. Maybe I should have wrote something down before I came here. But I will be back if I need something, because I knew that you would be there. But before I ask you for something, I'm going to try to find a way to pay for it. If we can't, then we'll talk.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Patton?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. First presentation, Mrs. Cheryl Spivey, Chief Financial Officer, will provide a brief update of the city's current general capital project status. The finance staff over the past six months participated in a CIP cleanup. The cleanup now puts each of the projects in a real-time of financial expenditures. As staff proceeds with the FY 2020 general capital budget, I will come back to you during the February 25th public work session, with recommendations for re-prioritizing a few projects that are in the current CIP with funding designation, but the project may be a few years out before starting. Are funds designated for a project that the direction has changed? This discussion on February 25th will provide a starting point for the FY 2020 CIP discussion. The second presentation, a resilient city is one that builds its capacity to prepare for, withstand, and bounce back rapidly from shocks and stresses. During tonight's presentation, Mr. James Wright, Chief Engineer, will engage City Council in a discussion about resiliency, to touch on the initiatives at the federal, state, and local levels. The presentation will conclude with an overview of the city's resiliency efforts and the city's proposed plan. Mrs. Spivey.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. As Dr. Patton mentioned, I'll present the current status of the city's general government multi-year capital projects. We currently have 104 general government capital projects. And when I say general government capital projects, that means that I'm not including the public utilities projects in this report. These projects have expenditures that have already been appropriated, so they've been included in a previous year budget or a budget ordinance. And the projects are either underway or have not yet started. And so of those 104 projects, the project authorization for them is $198.6 million. Actual expenditures, current as of yesterday, is $68.9 million. That leaves the unexpended balance at $121.7 million. In addition to that, $22.2 million have been encumbered. So that means there's a contract or PO, so we've already committed those funds, and it leaves an unencumbered balance of $99 million, $99.5 million. Of these projects, $60 million of the dollars are bonds that are authorized but not yet issued. We plan to, Finance Department has been working with Davenport to start the planning of an issuance of bonds that will be around $27 million, and we plan to have that completed by the end of the fiscal year. Probably issuance sometime in June, first, early June. I've also provided a historical spend-down of our general government capital projects. For fiscal 18, we spent $31 million. For fiscal 17, $21 million. And for fiscal 16, $10 million. That trend, for a government our size, that $30 million range seems to be very common. I mean, other places I've worked the same size, $30 million is common, because no matter how many projects we have out there, there's limited resources in doing the construction of those projects, because some of the same contractors are bid for multiple projects. So even though we have a larger capital budget, we're not, you know, we're only spending a portion of it each year. So I just want to provide that perspective and say, you know, we're not different than other governments in that arena. And as Dr. Patton mentioned, it may give us some opportunities to look at some of these and see if other projects may have taken priority over any of these that we have on the list.
Any questions, Elizabeth?
Of that $60 million that's authorized, and if you're going to issue 27 in June, I would assume there would be no more for this fiscal year, ending July, ending June 30th.
The last issuance of bond, yes, that would be our last.
So we'd roll over. We'll come into the next fiscal year with $33 million left and approved but unissued.
That's right. And we...
What's the calendar for that issue, for the 33?
For the 33, the following year.
The following year.
Yes, yes. Davenport has them once a year at this point. We did some catch-up the most recent year. We considered some issuances we hadn't done. The vehicle issuances, we ended up with two in one year, but beginning in '20, the plan is one issuance each year. Right. And we spend that money on a cash flow basis. So we spend our bond money first, and we try not to borrow more than we can spend in a year.
Other questions? You're going to cover the utility project?
We'll get that another day.
We don't have those tonight. This is just the general capital budget. We will be coming back with utility.
All right. Be prepared to tell us whether or not we should issue revenue bonds for our utility projects, our GO bonds, as we look at our debt.
Yes, we are working with Davenport on that right now, on making those, on getting suggestions for those determinations.
That was one small question. I guess in the fiscal year 2016, where it's only $10 million, does the amount that's not used roll over, carry over, or does it go back?
It does. So all of these are multi-year projects. So the funding, the funding's there until it's either used or re-appropriated for something else.
Okay. No more questions? No? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. James Wright will come forward with resiliency.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Here to give you a presentation tonight about resiliency at the federal, state, and local level, and at the end, just focus on what we're doing in the City of Portsmouth. Next slide, please. It's a little weird. So in this overview...
They have it in front of them. They just tell them to go forward.
We do. Yeah, when they go forward.
So going to talk about what is resiliency, look at an environmental context, and as I mentioned, look at it at the three different levels, but also focus on how resiliency merges with our comprehensive plan. And there's a statement by one of our consultants that I want to read to you, from some of the information they provided to staff. Cities face the increasingly complex challenges of climate change impacts and other natural hazards, as well as population growth and rapid urbanization, aging infrastructure, and poverty. As already more than half of the global population lives in cities that are creating 80% of the global GDP, overcoming these challenges is vital. City resilience aims to ensure the safety of urban inhabitants, increase livability, and enable economic competitiveness to create a flourishing economy and job opportunities. So what is resiliency? So to become a resilient community, those of you that have slides in front you indicate it's cyclical. So you just don't look at resiliency as just a one-stop shop. It continues, and so you continue to adapt. So the first thing you need to do is you're under constant evaluation. You're evaluating people, system, infrastructure, and capacity. And that evaluation is to determine strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And then you're going to develop plans to respond to shocks and stresses. That plan needs to be adaptable and needs to be flexible. Then, should it occur, you're going to actually respond to that accidental hazard, shock, or stress. And then there's that recovery period where you put that plan in action. After all that occurs, you reevaluate. Look at lessons learned, best practices, and then you modify and continue to move on. So every time, so for instance, say it snows. So we have our emergency operations plan. PoliWorks, Fire Department, all of those individuals that are involved in snow removal are going to do their pre-preparation, go over their plans, and get everything set for when that event occurs. We get the snow, so they're going to respond. They're going to do those things that they need to do during that event, do whatever the communication is, and that's that part of the plan. But after, they're going to meet, discuss what happened, what they did well, where they had weaknesses, things they need to do to improve. That informs the next plan for the next event. So resiliency is basically that physical effect happening through all the systems and everything that we do. That's the essence of resilient city. So looking at resiliency plans and goals. It must be data-driven for legitimacy. It enhances our ability to withstand disruptions and bounce back from those disruptions, but it must be adaptable, as I just indicated. However, when most people think of resiliency, they think of just natural disasters. But resiliency goes far beyond just natural disasters. So around the globe, we see increasing heat and rising temperatures. We also see that in the effect that as we move further and further away from the equator, those temperate zones are now becoming warmer. So all around the world, the population is seeing warmer, warmer temperatures. Other things we need to combat are sea level rise. The main causes of the sea level rise are melting of the Arctic ice caps. As you see before you, in 1984, it was significantly larger than it was in 2012. I suspect now in 2018, it's even smaller. For areas such as ours, sea level rise also comes with land subsidence. And as we come across hurricane season, we see that we're having more and more powerful storms. We end up with more Category 3, Category 4, and Category 5 storms these days, not only in the Atlantic, but also in the Pacific and other areas where they have hurricanes. So just a few environmental projections. You have a shrinking and elimination of the polar ice caps and glaciers, increased rate of sea level rise, higher intensity storms, and greater precipitation. Drought and more temper... Drought and more temperate arid areas becoming more like deserts. Spread of diseases to areas without natural immunities and reappearance of dormant diseases, warmer, more sick oceans, species migration and extinction. And then there are the economic impacts and challenges of mitigating all those factors above. So just further along that same line, today's hottest summers, when you're projecting out in the future, will be some of your coolest summers. Similarly, today's coldest winters will be some of your warmest winters. So that's just a snapshot of what's happening as we look at how our climate is changing. The next slide shows Sewell's Point, and you look, and you can see what the normal and average tides are, and you see the historic low tides and intermediate high tides, and you see they're projecting that our tides are going to run substantially higher, both low, high, and what our average tides are going to be. But climate and those environmental factors are not just your only threats. You have other threats. You have aging infrastructure. When you think of aging infrastructure, you can think of, on the public side, you think of buildings, utilities, storm drain. But on the private side, think of all those other utilities. You've got your energy grid, you've got your gas supply, and all those things emerging if you look at the ASCE report, American Society of Civil Engineers, so the annual report every year about the nation's infrastructure. We've been averaging, as a nation, a D. That's not good. So most of the nation is older and in some position that we're in, where we have a lot of infrastructure that needs to be addressed. A big factor in other threats is the human perception of risk. Case in point, at the last hurricane event we had, there was an evacuation order. If you're of the mindset that it's not going to happen to me, it's not going to be that bad, you don't leave. Or if you look at poverty and health, you may not be able to leave. So in our case, you had those people that, ah, not that bad, not leaving. In the case of Katrina, a lot of those people weren't able to leave, and so you have a whole different set of issues. And some of those issues become economic factors. But you also have issues such as cyber attacks and terrorism. We're in a military area, and we just recently had a drill, I think last week. And so those factors, should you have an event, affect transportation, security, and all other different types of things. But all of these things are rolled into, when you're looking at how to become a resilient city, what is your plan in place to address that shock or that stress? Who's involved? Who are your partners? What action strategies do you need to make? What type of communication? And then, how are you working and coordinating those efforts? At the federal level, the Corps of Engineers, it's got a couple of things they're doing as far as resiliency is. And you look at, they have a smart planning process that encourages risk-informed decision-making and the appropriate levels of detail for conducting investigations so the recommendations can be captured and succinctly documented and completed in a target of three years in compliance with their three-by-three-by-three rule. So that's $3 million, three years, and three levels of vertical coordination. So they're trying to get away from having these studies, feasibility studies, in these areas that have critical needs that go on and on and on, that are trying to cap everything at three. Now, they have certain things in place for things that don't necessarily fit into that category, but for the majority of their studies, they're trying to fit them into this criteria. And what smart planning means is S is smart, is specific, measurable, attainable, risk-informed, and timely. And this is what the Corps' new edict is to try to get through some of these feasibility studies, so they can actually get projects on the ground and sort of help some of these communities get through some of their issues. One of the biggest things they're doing is with first-floor elevations. Having first-floor elevations helps with flood insurance premiums, and it helps with risk assessment and mitigation evaluation. Looking at FEMA-
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, one of the things, and this is our third year, we meet with the Corps' complete team and the city's complete team quarterly. We just had a meeting last week. And during that meeting, we cover broad categories of things that are very, very important to us. Even though we're in winter, we have a report and the work that we're doing with mosquito control, partnering with Public Works and the Corps with Cranee Island. Then we deal with our flood plan, which a team working with Mrs. Pittenger and our team here. So that has really helped us in the partnership with our military partners of working on our projects around the calendar instead of just when something comes up. And it's worked very well, very well.
While we're here, do you mind if we give you questions? What candidates do we have for the three-by-three-by-three studies?
At this point, we, there's just been an authorization. So Norfolk, you know, they went through the Big Resilient Cities Program. That was a specific authorization just for Norfolk. We learned at the meeting with Dr. Patton that they have one at statewide level so that we can look at potentially doing something similar to what Norfolk did, so some sort of study. So staff is just in the interim stages of starting to look at what types of things we will want to be studied when this full authorization comes around. So, I guess, the short answer to your question, we don't have one now, but we're working towards it so we can be ready when the time comes.
They also indicated that they were not impacted by the shutdown.
Correct.
Sort of, kinda.
Yeah, they were, they were fully, well, the few times in their budget that they were fully funded. However, the federal partners that they work with were not. And so those, when they, that working relationship, they weren't able to get some things done because their partners were not at work.
The first three-bye is the 3 million, and that's the limitation on the cost of the study.
Correct.
It's got to be done in three years, and it's got to have three levels of-
Studies or surveys. So, looking at FEMA. FEMA has a program called HAZES or Hazards United States. It's a free software program that they provide that allows you to estimate the potential building and infrastructure losses from earthquakes, riverine and coastal floods, and hurricane winds. There's a comprehensive data management system that permits HAZES users to update and manage statewide data sets used in the program analysis. So you're able to look at, for any event, to look at facility damage, infrastructure losses, debris estimates, shelter requirement, requirements, casualties, and things of that nature for any event. That's free on their website. I was actually looking at their website the other day. You can download it, and it seems relatively intuitive to be able to use. I'm not a modeler or programmer, but it seemed relatively straightforward. They have guidance, information on how to get through certain steps, and they also have the ability to be able to contact someone to help you work through the program should you have some issues yourself. Their resilience office, their mission is to build a culture of preparedness through insurance, mitigation, preparedness, continuity of operations, continuity of government. And their biggest thing is that they have a number of grant programs. And the Disaster Recovery Reform Act, these reforms acknowledge the shared responsibility of disaster response and recovery. They aim to reduce the complexity of FEMA and to build the nation's capacity for the next catastrophic event. And that was signed by President Trump on October 5, 2018. Resiliency at the state level, the governor's office has the chief resiliency officer and coastal resilience master plan. VEMS does a lot of modeling, and they have a Center for Coastal Resources Management. There's the Virginia Coastal Policy Center, and there's the Virginia Sea Grant that advances resilience and sustainability of Virginia's coastal and marine ecosystems and the communities that depend on them. All of this is sort of wrapped into a ball in the current Executive Order 24, which lays out the steps Virginia's government will undertake to lead by example and ensure its facilities and holdings are resilient. In addition, it creates a series of reviews and planning efforts that will benefit the citizens, local governments, regions, public and private property. It orders the creation of a coastal resilience master plan that will detail specific actions to adapt and protect Virginia's coastal regions. It reviews state compliance with dam and floodplain management laws, and finally reviews all state pre-disaster hazard mitigation programs, and provides guidance for local governments on how to build and plan for a more resilient and adaptive manner. Finally, Executive Order lays out goals and ideas that further influence and improve resilience of the Commonwealth. That includes using nature-based infrastructure when possible, ensuring better risk communication, engaging the United States military, and empowering communities and individuals to reduce risk, and more. Resiliency in Hampton Roads. The Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan is an evaluation over a wide range of hazards that threaten the safety of residents and has the potential to damage and destroy both public and private property and disrupt the local economy and overall quality of life. The regional hazard mitigation plan recommends specific actions designed to protect residents, businesses, owners, and the built environment. This was done through the HRPDC and involves city staff, including our floodplain manager and members of our emergency services. You've all heard of the Joint Land Use Study that we're doing with the Navy. There's one with Chesapeake, and there's, we have the one that's going on. It's being project managed by the HRPDC, heavily involves our planning department, and then the departments that support the planning department through this process. It looks at land use and compatibility in and around those installations, as well as transportation, sea level rise, and resiliency. It also looks at opportunities to further our partnership and engage on a different level so that we can provide benefit to both the overall community, because military installations are a thriving part of our community. So looking at Virginia Beach, they have a consultant onboard, Dewberry. They're doing a comprehensive sea level rise and recurrent flooding analysis. If you've seen in Virginia Beach, they've had some issues with certain neighborhoods flooding during certain storms and being inaccessible at times. They're, through this study, they're looking to become, to come out with an adaptive strategy, an adaptive plan to be able to address some of these issues that they're having with their system. They have multiple systems that impact them from the beach to the Lynn Haven River to Back Bay. One of the biggest things that come out of that study is their work and look at rainfall intensity, which is gathering some steam around the region, is actually impacting some of the things that we're doing. As I mentioned before, that the storms are, and we're looking at specifically hurricanes becoming more frequent, but it's not just hurricanes. We see our rainfall events, our thunderstorms are becoming stronger and more intense. So what they've found is that our design these days is for the 10-year storm. What it appears that our 10-year storm is more equivalent to what's noted as the 25-year storm. And so they're looking at ways to change their design criteria instead of being at that 10-year storm, to move that higher threshold to be able to capture more runoff and be more effective when they do their drainage systems. For instance, we're looking at a few of our projects on a similar fashion to see what that difference would be and what the benefit would be going through that analysis. One such project, I'll talk about a little bit later, is the stormwater pump station is under design, and so we're looking at using that higher rainfall data rather than just a 10-year storm.
As you know, the PDC has a coastal resiliency committee, and it's throughout an open question, does the region need a hydraulic stormwater model, which would really be a bear to do for the whole planning district? Is that going to be one of the deliverables in the Dewberry study for a portion of the beach, number one? Number two, do we have such a model? Or you can-
I can't say whether they will be creating a hydraulic model for Virginia Beach. I anticipate that they will, just because of the level of detailed analysis that they're going through. And we're currently in the process of reviewing a proposal from our resiliency consultant to create our hydraulic model.
In doing so, you'll take into consideration all the drainage system in the city to include both open ditches and pipes?
Correct. It'll take a look at the entire drainage system. It'll also take a look at different scenarios as far as sea level rise, subsidence, and some other, and some other factors that we need to consider. Rainfall intensity. We have a model that was created by VEMS that has, that looks at building flooding, so that'll be used to do some additional calibration to that model. So we'll be able to look at not just flooding with the system, but how that flooding impacts structures in the city as well.
About 10 years ago, the city did a stormwater-
Study.
Management study, and it had an estimate of the cost of the improvements at that time. Do you remember what that number was?
Off the top of my head, no. I should be ashamed of myself, because we use it, we use it every day. And in fact, the consultant is using that study for his model, but also some of the other resiliency work that he's doing. But that study doesn't sit on the shelf. It's used by my department, Public Works, and Public Utilities on an ongoing basis to do the work that we do. It was a large number. I want to say the magnitude, it was 38 drainage assessment areas. I want to say it was on magnitude of $260 million.
It's in the hood.
I think it was 500.
500 was combined with utilities.
I remembered the 200, and that's why-
260 was just, excuse me, so 260 was just the drainage portion.
We're sure north of 200 now, and so-
Correct.
Pretty sure it was 500.
One thing I was going to say, Mayor, just thinking, as Mr. Wright met and talked about resiliency, what he just said is that what is coming, what we've seen, like it can rain last spring, we had rains that, you remember, we had nine inches in one rain, and then the next day it rained, and then it was 11 inches. The systems that we have that have been put in over the years, and we're going back 30, 40, 50 years, are not capable to deal with what was programmed, that this was going to be the 10-year, that now you're saying we're looking at, now maybe that's the 25-year. So it is putting cities in, as the mayor's saying, that which, that plan was done, was in the millions that you just said, oh my God, when will we ever get to this? But that is even changed now with the way that weather and things are just changing right before us.
Well, that's the beauty of a model, because you can change the variables, you can change the wind, the rain.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's, that's good, yeah.
If we use it.
So, and most people in the room are aware of the city of Norfolk, and they're part of the 100 resilient cities initiative and the work they're doing over their Ohio Creek watershed. They've been in the paper quite a bit for that, and they're probably, in our area, probably one of the leaders as far as looking at resiliency and those type of initiatives in the area. But we're going to discuss some of the things that we're doing here in the City of Portsmouth. So from a policy and program standpoint, we've adopted the new floodplain ordinance. We have the floodplain management plan, adoption of a new stormwater ordinance. We have the stormwater program management plan, the joint land use study, and the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan is, has a large component in there with resiliency. And actually, a part of that, your updated zoning ordinance, has some resilient components in it as well. Looking at the work that the city does with the Planning District Commission, resiliency comes up at a number of work groups we're involved in, the Regional Environmental Committee, or REC, the Coastal Resilience Committee that the mayor mentioned, and the Coastal Virginia CRS Work Group. There are also a number of projects in- There are also a number of projects and things that we've done or are working on or have put in place actually prior to getting our resiliency consultant. I'll just go quickly through the list, and you can feel free to ask questions about any of the projects that I mentioned. So, we have an emergency operations plan, traffic signal upgrades, the city fiber network, tide gate installation citywide, the Old Town Stormwater Pump Station, the VIMs flood modeling, Stormwater Park, the asset inventory, flood sensors, and improved design standards. There are water treatment plant improvements, sanitary sewer pump station improvements, assessment of the public school facilities for sheltering options, the Crawford Parkway seawall replacement, Portsmouth seawall replacement, Paradise Creek should be bridge replacement, Churchland Bridge replacement, and the new proposed public safety complex.
So, it says seawall that should be bridge?
Correct.
What's the status of that?
Which one? Paradise Creek or Churchland?
Paradise Creek.
Paradise Creek. We're fully funded, and we are in the environmental portion of the design, Churchland Bridge. We're compiling and going over the bid documents now, with the hope to advertise by the end of the month. Okay, so, resilient, sustainable Portsmouth. So, we went through an RSQ process, did the interviews, and we selected Arcade is USA as our resiliency consultant to provide planning and engineering services for resiliency. To date, we're just getting really started. But prior to getting started, actually into the resiliency initiative, we saw a couple of grant opportunities that were available. And so, we have applied for, with the aid of the consultant, a supplement to the 2017 Hampton Roads Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, and also for an advanced assistance grant. Those applications are in, they're under review, and so, we just have to go through the process to see if we get an award. There was a notice of a hazard mitigation grant that came out a few weeks ago. The team is going over the requirements for that grant to determine if we're going to put in for that grant as well. So, they're already on the ground, working for us. Currently, we're just kicking off basically our benchmarking effort, and we're benchmarking to develop quantitative and qualitative indicators for measuring and monitoring progress. So, we're looking over all our studies, all our data, what information that we have to feed into basically everything that we need to look at for resilience. So, we're looking at any studies, information we have about buildings, infrastructure, any data that they have over social services, BHS, anything the fire department has. And so, all this data is going to go into an analysis, and we're going to look at that and determine where our gaps are, if we need to do additional analysis in those gaps or to do something to fill that void. And then, we're going to have a stakeholder workshop where we're going to do some initial mapping. And out of that's going to come what we call story mapping, and it's going to tell the story of Portsmouth about where we are and where we need to go. And then, at the end of that, we'll end up with hopefully a dedicated working group that can sort of take the charge and help us move forward to develop our resiliency plan. And so, lastly, we're going to come up with a resiliency plan, and we need that plan to be realistic, actionable, it needs to meet stakeholder objectives, it needs to be adaptable, have measurable outcomes, it needs to examine programs, policies, and design standards, it needs to have well-defined projects, and it needs to be compatible with the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan. With that, I'll take any additional questions.
Questions?
Out of the, we said Norfolk is one of the 100 cities that has the resilience. Where is our status, and what are the top three things that's keeping us from moving or increasing our status?
Well, the 100 resilient cities is an initiative. It's not necessarily a ranking. So, when the subject or topic of resiliency became big, for lack of a better word, a number of cities were already doing some things, and it's basically a grassroots that sort of grew up, and so, they call themselves the 100 Cities Initiative, and so, those cities are there. So, it's not something that we're ranked low or whatever. We just haven't got to that point to be for any consideration as part of that group.
Shannon, did you have your hand?
No.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
It's posted on this.
I shall. We'll be giving you updates.
And the next report, can we have what Old Dominion is doing?
Yes. Yes. Oh, yeah. All right. Do you want to move forward, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, on the city manager's report tonight, you have two items. I will go through them. The first is the FY 2019 primary screening funds. This is an adoption of an ordinance accepting funds in the amount of $56,636 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Behavior Healthcare Service Fund for use by the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to provide primary care screening. And this primary care screening is for individuals with serious mental illnesses, and they are known to be at higher risk for situations where they have poor physical health outcomes, largely due to unidentified chronic conditions. The second one that will come before you tonight is the bulletproof vest programs for 2018. It's an adoption of an ordinance authorizing the transfer of $93,500 from the FY 2019 general fund budget to the FY 2019 grants fund budget for the use by the Portsmouth Police Department for the purchase of bulletproof vests. I have two items.
Dr. Patton, is the applicant going to be present for the public hearing? Do you know?
Yes. Yes.
We'll do our protocol for the new members of council. I'll ask Deborah to read the caption, and prior to the public hearing, we'll give the applicant 10 minutes to explain his or her application. And then, we can ask questions of the applicant, and then, Dr. Patton will call upon Mr. Baldwin to provide anything else that needs to be brought to our attention. Then, we'll have the public hearing, and then, we'll consider a motion, because this is on first reading. I think this is the first resiliency that we've had this year.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
I have two city councils' report backs. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as you are aware, the development of the Crawford Bay site includes the portside acreage, which is about half an acre, which is .6 acres. The project has been on hold due to recent announcement of the proposed development at this site. I'm seeking City Council's concurrence in moving forward with the acre remaining a part of the Crawford Bay site and staff discontinuing the contract for the building of the said structure. The portside contract is $1,404,000. We have spent $240,000 of this portside project to date for design and construction. The project is still in the initial stages of construction. The site can easily be restored for a reasonable cost if the project does not move forward. As a reminder, the city also received a grant from the Port of Virginia for $109,650, of which the city has received in payment from the port, $21,985.33 in reimbursement. These funds would be required to be refunded to the Port of Virginia if the project is canceled.
All right. The city manager's asking for higher guidance on this matter. She's recommending that we suspend the portside development. What's your consensus?
I don't think we have a choice.
Paul?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. You got it.
And one more, Mayor. Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, during the retreat, staff presented and reviewed with you a draft of the Crawford Quarter Revitalization Study. This study outlines a specific implementation plan for the redevelopment of the Crawford Quarter. By establishing a vision grounded in reality and action strategies, the city can take over time to achieve the designed future for this portion of downtown Portsmouth. The staff has asked that City Council review the draft report and provide feedback at the February 24 public work session, so that the consultant can incorporate in your comments into the study before engaging the public. And what I'm going to ask Mrs. Simmons, if we can get a time with her, either later in this week or next week, because she was not there, she does have the book, but I'd like for the team to walk through the presentation as you all have walked through.
And our homework, you to hear about what?
The homework, did we come to bring it or say?
We didn't tell them either way.
We didn't tell you either way. Do you want to bring it to the meeting, or do you want to send it to me?
I think sending it might be work better.
All right. If you could, if this is the 25th, which is the Monday, if you could get it to us by next Monday. Next Monday. Is that too quickly?
Yeah. One of Elizabeth is going to have her briefing.
Okay, we're going to do it this way. Yeah, we're going to do that this way. Okay. By next Monday. Then, we'll bring what you brought.
Monday's the holiday, so Tuesday.
We can get it electronic.
Next week.
All right. If you wanted to say Tuesday, okay. We'll bring what your comments are, so that you can have the review of what everybody said, and it won't be a long presentation.
You want the comments to you?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Solid.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, last night, there was a question about cigarette tax limits. My office did some research. There appears to be no upper limit with regard to the local cigarette tax. However, just give you as guidance, I believe the city of Alexandria is reported to have a local cigarette tax of about $1.15. You all received last night the tax is for local areas, but I believe the highest reported is the Alexandria area for local taxes of about $1.15.
Good. This brings us to City Council liaisons, and we'll start with Elizabeth.
I would just like to invite my colleagues and citizens who may be interested that the, on the February 26 Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission meeting, which is a public meeting, and is at 8:00 in the morning in this room, the U.S. Navy Facilities Director, whose name escapes me right now, will be here.
Admiral Rock, Chris Rock.
Will be here to talk about some of the federal facilities that are in Portsmouth, what their plans are, or what they might want to do. And so, I think it's going to be a very interesting meeting, as some of their properties are contiguous with our port-related properties.
That's St. Julian's. Yeah. A matter of FOIA, can more than two council members attend this meeting as part of the audience without having it be, if they don't participate in the meeting, but just be there with eyes and ears?
Certainly.
FOIA, okay.
Certainly. You can attend the meeting as long as there is not business conducted by this body, then it meets the requirements of the freedom of expression.
And our liaison, of course, can participate.
Certainly.
But those of us who might come to that meeting, we will be like the audience here.
In the dinner galley.
All right.
That you think would be good, worth listening to.
Yeah. And just to bring everybody up to date, the Navy owns land south of the Jordan Bridge that's not being used, and this is what he's going to talk about amongst other things.
That's all I have.
Paul?
I attended the PISC meeting. The former school operations property that we're aware of was discussed pertaining to a possible sale. Also, I attended the Historic Preservation Commission. Agenda was pretty slack. They just had to decide on a business owner refurbishing the site, so that was it.
Yes. Special meeting of PRHA led to conversation about, they have a trash truck that is broken down. It's going to cost them $200,000 to replace that truck. They want to bring up conversation at the next joint meeting between City Council and PRHA, the possibility of getting a contract with the city. I think they've asked before, and they said that the contract was too costly, or at least that's what is being reported back to me. But they are going to have to expend $200,000 out of their new amended budget to get a new trash truck. Conversation, a whole lot of conversation came up about dumpsters and trash bins in public housing facilities, so there is some concern that they will speak back to. Received an email today from one of the new members, of course, that was forwarded to you regarding how checks are signed off. So, there's going to be some topic of discussion with that, whether the chair signs off on the check with the executive director. So, there's some concerns about the bylaws with that. Nate and I had our joint liaison meeting with the school board, and of course, we all know that we'll be attending a retreat on February 23, next Saturday, two Saturdays from now.
Location?
Location, TCC. 8:30 in the morning, continental breakfast meeting starting at 9, lasting until 3. So, I know that some members of school boards have some other obligations, so they'll be probably floating in. At least, that's what I've heard with them. But there are some heavy conversations that we discussed. Nate and I came up with some ideas or some things that we wanted to question them about. They had some things they wanted to question us about. One topic that was brought up was the real estate credit for our teachers. I don't know how we can get to that, you know, with the teachers there that are here. We asked the question about the school capacity for the 19 schools, rezoning of the schools came up. Let's see, Nate, anything else that we?
A lot of it. You know, we had a lot of conversation was based on our conversation at the retreat, and we carried it to them, that we really wanted to form that partnership with the school board to move forward. And that's how the conversation, you know, we entered that, because at the end of the day, we might be two separate bodies, but we're still the same city. And we were discussing how, you know, there's a lot of things that can be done, and it's not always, you know, financially, but there's other things we can do to assist in different things. And their liaisons were really on board with doing the retreat, and these were topics that we discussed. And, you know, some of the things that came at the retreat, we were talking about the middle school, so they provided us with some information that we didn't have about their looking, prior to that school being built, as possible rezoning, which it could be some other schools closed. And that was my question, was if we're, you know, have that debt service for that school not closing another school, where would their staffing come from? And that's what they said they would look at hiring a firm to do rezoning, and that way, they could transfer staff from possible closing schools to run the new building. So, it was a really good, you know, meeting with us, with their two liaisons, and looking forward to that retreat, so we can start working better together.
Yes. I just wanted to report on the Planning Commission meeting that took place last, I think Tuesday it was. The Vice Mayor and myself attended. There were a couple of items for the public hearing, which was the new Wawa that is coming into Old Town. And I think there was one citizen that came to speak against that development, and as a result, the vote was taken, and I think it was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. In addition to that, there was some discussion started about also the Newport area, the development that's going to be proposed over there. The particular people that are part of that were not present, so they tabled that until the next meeting. But overall, it was a good meeting, and good to be there.
Tomorrow, the Regional Connector Study Group meets. That's an $11 million study to look at the next project. Well, it's essentially the next projects that would next projects that will be undertaken by HR Tag. The discussion is whether or not that study should be linked with the long-range transportation plan for the region, which is both a federal and a state requirement. But several years ago, the feds came down with the requirement that the long-range transportation plan, we're talking about the 2045, has got to be fiscally constrained. In other words, it's got to be fundable, you have to identify. And it's a nutty way to do a master plan, because 10 years out, we may have different revenue sources, the revenue sources that we've got now may be different. Who would have thought that the legislation that passed the General Assembly back in 2013 to create HR Tag would have come about? And so, our position is, is that the two studies need to be decoupled, not put together. Lastly, last night during our council meeting, we got an email from Richmond that Senator Lucas's bill, SB 1126 on casinos, which passed the Senate, would be heard today by the House Rules Committee. So consequently, Solomon and I went to that meeting at 10:30, and here's a brief status report. On the Senate side was Senator Lucas's bill, and Senator Lucas's bill has five cities, and it has the requirement that JLR, the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, which is a group of professionals, 25 in number, with the commission itself being members of the General Assembly, and the chair of that is Tommy Norman, who's the Senate Majority Leader. It requires that a JLR study be done, and that study reported out by the 1st of November this year, and given to the General Assembly, so the General Assembly will have the benefit of that in its 2020 session. And just like we put ordinances on first and second reading, the bill would be up for its second reenactment in 2020, and the General Assembly would have opportunity to tweak what they enacted this year, assuming that her bill passed. And then, after the close of that session, then the referendums could take place, and they've got to take place from the end of the session to July 1st, so that's a very small window. On the House side, the Speaker of the House is Kirk Cox, and Kirk Cox, Mr. Speaker, is anti-gaming of any sort, sports betting, online betting, and casinos. And the House bill that passed created a study commission called the Gaming Study Commission, and it's a 15-member body, nine members from the General Assembly, four from one chamber and five from the other, with three citizens, one citizen appointed by the House, one citizen appointed by the Senate, and one citizen appointed by the governor. And then, as voting members would be the Secretary of Finance, the Secretary of Commerce and Trade, and the Secretary of Agriculture and Forestry. And you might be wondering, yes, that's where the lottery board is under, and that's the reason.
Why would they put it?
And so, you know, the Secretary of Finance is Aubrey Lane, Commerce and Trade is Brian Ball, who's a former attorney with William Mullin, and the Secretary of Agriculture is a forester, she was the state forester. But that would be a study commission in which the members were primarily General Assembly members, and the chair of that would be the patron of the bill, which is Delegate Chris Peace from New Kent County. And so, you can connect the dots and see that there wasn't going to be a favorable yeah. All right, so that bill went over to the Senate, Senator Lucas's bill went over to the House, and that's what got heard today. Senator Lucas, Senator Carrico from Bristol, and Senator Norman spoke to the bill. And then, what got reported out, what got passed, is that they conformed her bill to the House bill, which is another way of saying, we'll take the title off her bill and put it on the bill that we adopted. But what you get out of that is two bills that are different that go to a conference committee, and so, there'll be a conference committee that will be appointed, so it's really important that the right members, both the House and the Senate, get on that conference committee. And conference reports are considered on the 22nd of February, which is the last day before the adjournment on the 23rd. The House budget has a conflicting study. In the budget is $200,000 for JLR to study gaming. And so, coming out of the House, you have the commission, which is a legislative study, plus funding for JLR. But on the Senate budget, a vast majority of Senator Lucas's bill was extrapolated and put into the budget bill. And so, visualize this, you'll have a conference committee working on the two bills, and then you'll have the budget conferences working on reconciling the differences, which are both numbers and narrative. So, we won't know until the very final hours of the General Assembly, what the status. I think it's safe to say that there's going to be a study, and if there's going to be a study, then the better alternative is for JLR. Solomon, do you want to add anything, please?
No, Mayor, I think you pretty much concisely spoke to what's been occurring probably for the last week and a half, but certainly culminated today in terms of the status and where we are. We'll be awaiting to see that conclusion, so we know what next steps are for the city.
And it was interesting in the sense that in that room, it was like a Battle of the Titans. You had the leadership of the Senate and the leadership of the House, and it was on the House turf, and so, it was interesting.
Open charge.
With that, we need a closed session. Is there a motion?
I'm going to go into closed meeting, A pursuant to Virginia Code subsections 2.2-3711, 8.7, and 8.8, for the purposes of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city, and/or consultation with legal counsel employed by the city regarding specific matters requiring the provision of legal advice specifically regarding tax sale proceeds, and B, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711, 8.7, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect negotiating or litigating posture of the city specifically regarding Jesse Andre Thomas versus Elizabeth M. Simmons, Norfolk Circuit Court Case Number CL 17-32351, and Jesse Andre Thomas versus William E. Moody Jr., Norfolk Court Case, Circuit Court Case Number CL 17-4685.
Sir, a second.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, a discussion on the motion. Here and now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Here.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mayor Raff?
Yes, and just for the record, the two hears were yes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We're in closed session.